Participating in the meeting. This is a work meeting, so we don't have opening ceremony, so we can go ahead and get started into the working agenda. I do need to do a roll call. And this is Mayor Rick Rosenberg. Just say you're here when I call your name, Councilman Drake.
Here.
Councilman Mathis or woman. Councilman Waite.
Yeah.
Can you guys hear that? Councilman. Where'd he go? Goobler.
Yeah.
Councilman Shakespeare, can you hear us now? Ben? Can you hear us? Your radio's off.
I'm here.
Great. Got a full council night, so appreciate again, everybody getting in. The under general business, item two A. The first item is the financials. Brock or Debbie, who's leading this? Brock's on the phone.
My understanding Brock was.
Way to throw him under the bus, girl.
Well, he didn't. I would be happy to share, but I haven't really been involved.
Okay, we'll wait for Brock to get off the phone.
Yeah, I'm trying to get back. We were having kickback in the council room. With the live stream, so I was just getting us. Back up and running there, so just give me one moment and. All right. Can you, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
All right, so. First off, we have the. Quarterly financials. And I will get here and share my screen. Everybody can see that there. So we have here the financials for the. Third quarter period ending March thirty first, twenty twenty. So far as through this. Three quarters of the fiscal year. As you can see, things have been pretty good. We don't know this last quarter is going to be our interesting one, but. For through the three quarters, as you can see on our revenue side. Total, we've collected eighty eight point seven percent of budgeted revenues. Every. All of our funds there are ahead of projected, except for our. Intergovernmental revenue. And that comes from. A lot of it comes from our revenues coming from Ivan City that helps cover. The fire EMS. And court services. And some of that comes as a timing as we bill at the end of the quarter. We send a bill and then we receive it. So that's a little behind on receiving that payment. That also accounts in their intergovernmental is. Our Class C road funds. So that one I project will be hit where it needs to be, or just our timing of getting our payments from Ivan City runs a little bit behind. So. As you can see, our other areas are. Ahead of schedule or ahead of our projected for this time of year. And so. Our revenues are definitely have looked good. I said, we're worried about this fourth quarter. But through this third quarter revenue wise. Definitely our sales taxes said eighty percent, we're five percent ahead of. Where are eighty percent of what we budgeted, so we're five percent ahead of what we thought we would be. So hopefully that will continue for the last. The fourth quarter will still stay close. I think we'll see a tick down though, definitely the last little bit, so. One of the questions probably might be asked as we look at miscellaneous revenue, you see it's five hundred and two percent. In miscellaneous revenue. We have in there. Gain on sale of assets, some cell tower proceeds and donations. And one of the things that has that up so high is the donation that we received from. The development group going in across the. To the South Hills that helped. They made a donation in helping in the construction of the Chapel Street or Sycamore Crossing Bridge. And that has that in there, so that's why that is. Above where we are projecting because we did not know at that time that we were going to receive that donation when we did the budget. So that accounts for just over two hundred thousand, two hundred thousand dollars there. On the expenditure side of that, we are at eighty two percent. Of expenditures budgeted. You can see some of them, we're all few, Justice Court Administration, Police, Fire EMS and Building, Sports Field are all. Underneath those about seventy five percent, which we would be looking at to be at that or less for this. Fiscal year, a couple of departments that are above that, as you can see, is Public Works. And Parks and Trails. And the reason for Public Works. Being above that has to do with the Sycamore Crossing Bridge of land purchase and. Some of the construction and the construction cost of that, so that one is up there. Those per land purchases that we had are reimbursed. There was a reimbursement that came from the, I believe it was the cog. On those land purchases, so we were reimbursed on that land. Then also we have right now the construction of the bridge of payments through there, which were impact fee eligible. But we had to put the impact fees upfront into an escrow account. And so as we make the payments, then we get a draw back to cover that cost. So. That's where that one sits a little bit higher than what we had budgeted on that. For parks. For parks, we have on there are increasing, some of the increase in the expenses there has to do with the BMX track. We did receive the funds from rap tax from the county, but we had to expend them. So those expenditures are coming out of. The Parks and Trails budget. It wasn't in the original budget at the time. So all those expenditures that we've have of the hundred and fifty eight thousand dollars that we received from. The county and rap tax is coming out of the Parks and Trails, which weren't in the budget, so will that also will have to have an amendment here next month to count for that. And you see Swiss Days as well, but Swiss Days expenditures are pretty much are done for this fiscal year. There might be a few, but I believe we will be underneath that budget of sixty five thousand. There's only a few things that we do at the end of the fiscal year. We do a few things just to. Secure in rental equipment and stuff. We have to make some deposits, but we should be just fine. Under Swiss Days as well. So. So as you can see, you can come look and compare a little bit from two thousand nineteen at the same time period and taxes we had only collect, we had. Two point two million. This year, year to date, same time period, we're two point four. You can kind of look at that comparison. Like revenue wise, as I said, we were at this time period, we had collected four point nine million in revenue and this year today we're at five point four. And then you can, and expenditures wise, we are higher as well. We expended roughly four point seven million. This same time period compared to this year, just over five million. Which leaves revenue over expenditures for this time period, four hundred and sixteen thousand, five hundred and twenty seven dollars of. Revenue over expenditures.
Brock, I have a question. On the sales tax revenues. In the lead call recently, they said that like grocery stores are actually doing much better than in previous quarters. And so where the majority of our sales tax comes from like our own power sales and from Harman's. Obviously, there'll be a drop in vacation rentals, but do you really see there being a big drop in our sales tax revenues?
Well, so for us, yes, our, our sales tax that we stay here locally as a local sales tax, what's collected locally, we retain fifty percent. The other fifty percent is put into the pool with the state. The. Majority of our sales tax that we actually get in our sales tax distribution, more of it comes from the state distribution than what we retain locally. And that's the part that I'm more worried about as a state as a whole. What's our, the sales tax going to, to be as a state as a whole? That is more my concern. I know locally harms, I feel is still doing rather well. Seems to stay, has stayed relatively busy. The other restaurants, it seems. Capriati's Cafe Rio, Lamy's, they're all seem to be still busy every time I drive by. So that I'm not as worried about. I'm worried more about is the state portion of the distribution that we'll receive. And we'll get that. We'll kind of have that idea come June when we get the April distribution, but by that time we get it. This budget will be approved, and so we won't really fully know until then, but we'll have an, that'll give us an idea of maybe what we're gonna maybe see. Going forward for the rest of the year. And so our budget, as I'll talk about here additionally, is. Very conservative. We've, we've really cut back and that's how we're gonna, gonna go starting fiscal year twenty one. Twenty twenty one, and if things are better, then we will allow the departments to do some of the things that we've pulled out, some of the projects or equipment. And we'll, we'll start easing those back into the budget as we see revenues coming in and seeing where that will, they'll project out to be.
Hey Brock, did you get that email I sent you that economy study the state's putting together to give you some projections on April's numbers next week?
I didn't see it. I'll look back through and see. I didn't, I did not.
Yeah, they put the, I don't know if it was the State Treasurer Auditor, somebody was on the call earlier. In the week. And said that they have a. They've contracted to have some projection numbers available for the cities on May eleventh for April, just so to give us an idea of what those budgets are going to look like on that statewide thing.
Okay, I'll take a look at that.
Go ahead, Brock.
So there's, that's page one of that. We'll get in here as I, I'll scroll through this, this. PDF and go through a few more of these things as you look at. We'll go into impact fees here. Revenue wise. We're way below, but the. Parks, most of that there in parks, impact fees is not what we projected to actually collect. It's what is fund balance. Reserve impact fees that we had on hand to. Use to build the Swiss Memorial Park, the Loud Flow Trail Extension. Those are impact fee that we just are using now at this time, so. We're actually collecting, but it doesn't look as well as only twenty four percent, but we have, that's majority of that. Is, like I say, is fund balance of impact fees. We actually were using. Roughly a million dollars. There were, we were bringing over from impact fees, so. So this just breaks down what we saw in the first sheet. Breaks down into a chart, seeing how much breaks out. To. Each category, what it looks like in a pie chart. You can see the majority of our revenue does, comes from taxes. Next would be charges for services. I say miscellaneous revenue seems high. That's not, that's kind of abnormal this year based on the donation we received. And here's. A look at the expenditure wise, looking also into a. Chart. And see if you look at the costs. Look at this year, Public Works Administration, Parks and Police are at the top of. The expenditures. I think if you look at ongoing, your topic budgets are usually police and administration, kind of your two higher ones each year. And administration kind of runs high because it covers a lot of costs that are paid for that benefit the other budgets, other funds in the city. Jump here into the enterprise funds. Were there any questions regards to the general fund?
Where, where are we? On the revenue for. Building permits? You, you had some of that that was lumped in with. Funds that were already there, the fund balance, but where are we actually to date? Project, you know, what we projected for building permits versus where we actually are.
So based on impact fees. We have collected on streets, we've collected about fifty five percent of budget. Parks and Trails is at fifty percent and public safety is at fifty four percent. So that's where they're at, actually, based on budgeted, we are, I believe we're at sixty one building permits. For the year, we budgeted eighty, I believe, for this fiscal year, so we're lower. I talked to Corey. And he thinks there's a good chance that we'll, over the next two months, we will end up at eighty. So we'll be right there close. I'll say for fiscal year twenty twenty one, we've reduced that number down. I think we're projecting that seventy building permits. That answer that question, Mr. Shakespeare?
It does. No, that's great. Thank you.
All right, enterprise funds. First up, we have the. The water fund. This year total, we collected seventy point six percent, but of charges for services are our operating. Actual revenue, we're at seventy five percent, so we're right. Right on line there. Revenue wise and expenditure wise are quite a bit down at forty seven percent and. Part of that sometimes has to do with our, our bond payments. Why that is, that is. Down there, we also have a transfer to the general fund. We will do at the end of the year. Which is impact fees to pay, cover the payment here at the city office on that bond, that portion that's impact to be eligible from the water fund. Also, we have our well utility costs. Are. Way down so far this year, we just, the wells have just been turned on. As far as Jack has stated that the well, they're running good. And so those, we'll start to see some of those costs, but I know we've only expended forty percent of our well utility costs for the, the current year. So that leaves for this year, right now, currently we have revenue over expenditures of five hundred and twelve thousand dollars in water.
Is that the new meters and stuff? Are they included in that budget?
They are.
Good.
All right, we'll move. You can see here a graph comparison to the last four years. For twenty twenty, our revenue is, is up compared to previous year and with the expenditures down. So revenues are up just slightly. Sewer fund. Again, our. Our revenues are for operating revenue, the charges for services, seventy seven point five, we're right, right in line where we need to be. Our. Other revenue. Is up a little bit. That was a. That was a payment from Ivan City. As they help. With the sewer truck. We are partners with Ivans. We maintain it and they just cut us a check for part of the bond payment and. Maintenance and storage and insurance of the sewer trucks that we have. You see, and expenditures are at forty, we'll call forty four percent. Which will leave us a revenue over expenditures of roughly three hundred and thirty seven thousand. There's graph, see where revenues also are up a little bit for this year compared to last and our expenditures down. I will note too, and all this, that we did put a budget free. We did freeze expenditures earlier this year than anticipated due to. What's going on? So usually we do this in May and we put the freeze on back in March, so. All expenditures really are, we're just getting, doing what we need to, to keep things functioning. There's no extra expenditure except for the projects. That were already in progress or the impact fee projects, so. Electric fund. We have their total revenue, Eric Rev called seventy seven percent. Our charge for services are there right above or seventy five percent. And we have expenditures down at sixty four percent. Well, that would leave revenue or expenditures at six hundred and ninety two thousand. So far, and you should see a little bit of an uptick there as we're going into, it's warming up, and so a little more like electric sales, also. Electricity costs as our costs running through UAMs. Will increase as well. As there's more power being, being used. And we'll see how that runs with our generators. I'll see which cost is best. Jack and Kristelle, Gary, they keep a good track of what our cost is to where our strike point, whether it's more beneficial for us to run the generators and go in the market, get power. Or to not run the generators and go in the market, so.
Hey Brock.
Yes.
Jack, where's, just curious, where is the market price right now? Is it lower than it has been with the gas down?
I don't know what it is. Let's get Jack.
The, the market's been really cheap because of all the surplus solar down in California. So the market's been really cheap and of course the heat hasn't hit it yet, so. Right now, the market's been cheap and we would take it, but and last year we didn't run the generators. An awful lot because the market was so cheap. So we'll just have to see what happens, how hot it gets. But. Kind of been a blessing to us because of all the surplus solar they've got in California.
Cool. Thank you, sir. Thanks, Brock.
Yep. All right. So here you see our graph as well. This year, our revenue compared to actually last year, revenue is actually down just slightly. Our expenditures are down, down a little bit more than that also. Not doing too bad. If we are up from two thousand eighteen and two thousand seventeen. And for the stormwater fund. Stormwater, there again, charges are operating revenue, we're at seventy nine percent. And other revenue there at a hundred and so a total of eighty three percent. With expenditures. At called sixty one percent. Our actual stormwater service fees were, that we've collected. And we had is on the utility bills is at roughly eighty six percent.
Have we collected the six percent franchise fee from the water company in Santa Clara?
From the canal company?
Yeah.
We have not collected a franchise fee from the canal company.
It has come up a couple of times in discussions with the canal company. So. They know that we're thinking about it and as they sell to. Outside users. Going to become a, a bigger issue we need to resolve.
So there's a stormwater within the graph, as you can see here, our revenues probably just slightly headed two thousand nineteen and expenditures. Probably right about there as well, maybe a little bit less. I said that one, that left revenue over expenditures of a hundred and thirty thousand. Which the stormwater fund, it's in the last year. Is good to see it then in a good positive direction as it's had it some rough time as we work in landslide project. And some of those issues we've had through stormwater. It hasn't been the, the best fund. But definitely moving forward to la- last year and this year, so. Probably been a positive direction. Any questions? From council?
Brock, did you receive that last payment on the landfill from FEMA?
On the landslide? I believe we have them all.
You've got them all now. Okay, good.
Oh, yeah.
Just one question, Brock is, so you're saying there's some bond payments. I mean, looking through all this, it looks like every department. Well, all of these water power sewer are all doing very well. What is the anticipated? Bond payments we've got in there?
Off the top of my head, I, I don't have all of them. We have currently in water, I believe here in, I believe it's this. Maybe this next fiscal year, we pay off one of our water bonds. And we do pay one off. We, we make about a payment and a half, and so we're going to pay it off a little bit of kind of, it's on schedule, but it's how when we refinance that we decided to make a kind of a larger payment at the end. So we have that. You know, there's, there's some that we could look at and say, if we want to make some larger payments and pay them off, we could dip into some fund balance and make a payment. But I don't have off the top of my head to say exactly what those numbers would be, but I can look into it and let you know. How much is needed on each one of those bonds to get to pay them off. There is a couple of large ones that are out there, the two thousand twelve. Heights, our water project from the CIB, it's a large one that the water pays, majority for stormwater pays a little bit. Some of those are larger. There's the power. Power might have one that we could look at that's coming fairly close. To be paying off that we could look at and maybe make in some, a couple of payments and pay it off a little bit early.
And I guess. Mayor Council, what's your thought on, I mean, obviously in. Where we're at today, courses are fun about, you know, are we, is that something we want to look at? Maybe Jack, that's maybe something. Jack would have more to say on I. It seemed like things look really good as far as those. Certainly, we want to be in a good position, but that's something we want to look at, or is it even worth looking at?
Brock, it, this Jack, it seems like. On the water doesn't, I believe it's the water, don't, don't we have the, the bond payment actually goes up? We get rid of one, but it actually goes up a lot higher.
Yeah, I. Not off the top of my head, I don't, there's one that the payment goes up just because we're paying off a payment and a half, but ongoing, I. I couldn't say that for sure.
Yeah.
One second.
I think it does.
Brock, did you see that Josh Westbrook's trying to get into the meeting?
Yeah, I saw that. I was gonna grab him as soon as we jumped to that item.
Okay, perfect.
If you were in your office, Brock, you got them all right behind your desk.
I'm not at my desk. I'm in the. If I was at my desk, I would, yeah, I could rattle that answer off much, much easier. But it is for next fiscal year, so this current fiscal year, our bond payments were three hundred and eight thousand. Next fiscal year, the principal goes up to three hundred and fifty eight. So it does increase slightly. I think this next year is the year they're going to jump because we're going to pay the one off, the two thousand five. I believe is being paid off. It jumps up a little bit, then we still have the two thousand six. And a two thousand, the two thousand twelve CIB.
Okay, no, I just thought I'd throw that out there. Just looking through the numbers, obviously it looks good. Looks like you guys are doing a great job. I just, if there is a way to. Get out ahead, great. If not, if you're like where we're at, I'm, I'm good too. It looks good.
I definitely can get those numbers. We can have more of the next meetings, whether maybe the June work meeting or the next regular meeting. One of those I can bring and say, here's where our bond payments are at. Here's, you know, what we have left remaining to pay off and we can have that discussion. If that's something we want to do. So. At the end of this. There's a. Do the same thing I did in the general fund, a little pie chart shows you can see the majority of our revenue in the enterprise funds. Everyone comes from the electric. And then storm. Or water, and then as you see, storm and sewer are very, a little bit smaller. Here's there and also on the expenditures, the majority of it runs through the electric, the part electric fund. And the very end, if you saw in the, in there, you went through the packet. In the very end, if you saw in the, in there, you went through the packet. Um, as you can see here, uh, just a little line graph looking at our sales tax. The line graph doesn't take all the years, but this has all the way back to two thousand twelve. You can kind of see where we've, that came, two thousand twelve. I mean, we only received five hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars. And year to date, we're you know, oh, nine hundred thousand. So definitely have come a long way, sales tax from where two thousand twelve was and what we were working with at that time. Uh, we also have the highway tax. And see also where this year, we're about a hundred and thirteen thousand, actually what we've collected. Whereas even back to two thousand seventeen, for a total year, we only collected eighty-two thousand. Uh, the next one is the local option, uh, still squarely sideways on here. Uh, but this is the first year we've collected it, sorry about that. Um, we've collected thirty-five thousand, I think when it was first put in, the projection for Santa Clara was about seventy-five thousand. What they projected that we would collect, right about there, so. Seeing as we're at thirty-five and we've only been, they started collecting it. They gave us November, and then they took it all back. And then when they started distributing it again, so. So thirty-five thousand through part of a year, we're only, not gonna see about eight months of that, so. We have our room tax. And see, I'll say, look back to two thousand twelve, we only had seven hundred dollars. Toward today, uh, through March, we're about forty-five thousand. We had collected. And see kind of the jump of two thousand you know, seventeen, really kind of, we jumped from nine thousand a year to twenty thousand. Been pretty good, uh, jumps each year, so. And the last one we have here is the rap tax. Uh, we've been collecting as a end of March, we're about ninety-one thousand. Compared to last year, we were at ninety-nine just for the entire year, so we project to be above that as well this year. So I'd say as a whole, the city financially have, have moved in the right direction, definitely the department heads, directors, the staff has done a fantastic job of watching their expenditures, our people are very, well, they're pretty frugal in what they do, they do get what they need. A lot of extra expenditures out there, they do, really do a fantastic job, uh, for the city, so. Any questions?
Brock, do you tell them that they do a fantastic job?
Did I tell them that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Good.
Did they, you know, they do a fantastic job, even especially right now. When it's not fun when I say stop spending, you can only do the bare minimum, and, and they do, they, they just, they do, they don't, they don't complain. They, they go to work, they work really hard, I mean, they do. Um, and I know staff uh, this year, this coming year, we're really, uh, excited. Because for a lot of years, they've gone without, and a lot of upgrades and equipment and stuff, they've worked with some old equipment. And, uh, when we came this year and said we're gonna make some cuts, they, they did it, and they, they understand that uh, what needs to be done, and they, they, like I say, they, they just go work hard and deal with what they have, and they're happy when they get the new, but they, they don't complain, so we have great staff.
Any other questions for Brock, council? Thank you, Brock, appreciate that.
You want me to run real quick, uh, through some budget for next year?
Sure, love to hear some budget for next year. I was hoping, you know, I was on pins and needles, hoping you were gonna say that.
I figured so, and that's what most people come for.
I heard the hush over the crowd in council chambers when you said.
Alright. So, this coming year for fiscal year two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one. Uh, as you can see on this, this is the general fund. Come right through this, uh, on the right-hand side is a percent change, or not, says percent change from fiscal year, our current fiscal year. So, as you see, our initial budget, what people had, as this, this current year's budget is uh, we're in right now is six point one five one million, is this fiscal year two thousand twenty. As you can see, going in for fiscal year twenty twenty-one, we're down to five point six, so. Look, and we've cut, you know, five hundred thousand dollars, we're going less than this current year's budget. We had originally in this budget, we were about six point two, so we had gone up about fifty thousand. You know, roughly maybe a hundred thousand dollars, we had gone, it was the increase originally. So you can see what staff has done to go, they originally came in about six point two million. And they've found ways to cut, and we've gone all the way down to five point six. That's why I say they, they're, they're very conservative, they've done, worked really hard for this next year to look at this, to make it work. But if revenues are better, then we'll start to get back into letting them get some of the equipment and that they, we pulled out. So, current year, there we have our projected taxes. Our taxes consist, you know, property taxes, civils tax, highway tax, franchise fees, uh, the room tax. All those are in there, we're going at two point five million, say it's six point four, six point five percent decrease from this current year. Although that's the, the, the big one, you can see as you go down through, a lot of them are a little bit smaller, actually, some have a small little increase. But overall, we're an eight point eight five percent increase from this current fiscal year of two thousand twenty. If you remember from the budget retreat, we had a lot of items on the board, kind of wish list, the staff wanted, all those things have been, uh, removed from the budget. Along with a lot of, uh, other items. As you can go through, we can, you can see more of that detail. As you can see, there's each department of the general fund, kind of where they are compared to this current fiscal year. Or you see, there is an increase, seeing the police. We did get the budget, projected budget from Ivan City. And there, they have a few things still, and there, uh, their finance director said, we're not sure if all those things will make it in the budget, but currently uh, they have a few pieces of equipment and actually talked about possibly adding an officer. But like you say, they're not sure all that will make it in, so that number could adjust as well by the time we come to adopt the budget in June. As you can see, the other budgets all had a decrease, uh, the Santa Clara, Miss Santa Clara pageant, we left alone. Miss, I'm just what we've done with the scholarship and stuff, we didn't make any adjustment there at this time. Well, that leaves us with a budget of, you know, store five point six million for next year.
Think that's wise.
I, 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 I hope so, I hope it's, it's wise, Denny, I, I think we're def- definitely, definitely better to be a little conservative here at this time. Was it, you, would you like to go through e- each department a little more, or anything, dive into anything?
Counsel?
S- so Brock, you're, ju- how you said that is, I mean, if things do improve better than we anticipate, we can reevaluate this, some of those things, the, the department heads are cutting, we can, we can look back into those six months, eight months, i- we down the road and see, see where we stand.
Yeah, I wa- I would anticipate, we would start looking December, January, once we see six months in. If we see that our revenues, things are projecting better, the trend is much better than, yeah, we'll, we'll sit down and say, okay. What can we do that we cut out, what, what needs to be done, what are our needs at this time? So, because those definitely, those needs could change from, from now, what they want, they're looking at, to six months from now, our needs, seven months from now, we'll, could change, and so we'll look at that, and like I say, about December, January. And I'll, and I'll let you know, there are, uh, we did take any, there are no increases. No wage increases in this budget, we have, those are all out.
Okay, thank you, Brock, appreciate that. We'll look forward to some more budget stuff in the upcoming weeks.
Yep, we have a public hearing. The last meeting of this month will be the public hearing on it, and then we'll adopt it the first regular meeting in, in June on this this budget, so we'll probably bring back next week to, if there's any need for discussion. We can talk about it, if not, we'll just plan on the, the end of the month.
Okay. Alrighty, um. Item two A two. Uh, Little League discussion, Brad, I'm assuming you'll let Josh in, Brock?
Just, just admit him. So, he'll just connect up and he'll be, take just a minute.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Uh, just to start off the conversation on Little League, everything that we're doing with, uh, Little League has been in compliance with the governor's, uh, recommendation. We didn't allow any practice or any Little League to participate in anything, uh, on city property until the, uh, the category went from red to orange, which allowed groups of twenty, and at that time, we allowed Little League, working through, uh, Josh Westbrook, who's a Little League president, to uh, practice only. And to make sure that they, when they do practice, they follow CDC guidelines with the six-foot social distancing. Uh, Josh has been really great to work with, and, uh, so right now, we're, as far as I know, we're just kind of on hold waiting to see, we're hoping maybe the governor would have changed the area to yellow, but we're still orange. So that's kind of where we're at, and Josh was wanting to talk to the council about their feelings on Little League season this year, so. Is he available, Brock?
Yeah, he's there and I just unmuted him, so.
Okay.
You, you can see me?
Can't see you.
But you can hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay.
Can you see, Josh, can you see us?
Yeah, I can see you.
Turn your video on, your camera video on, and we should be able to see you.
Well.
Lower left corner.
It's the upper right.
Um, should be down in the lower left, but maybe his is in a different spot. You've muted yourself now, Josh. And can you unmute him, Brock?
I got it, I think, you see, can you hear me now?
Go ahead, we'll, we'll just listen to you and look at the neat way you spell your last name.
Okay, well, I, you know, I'm getting a lot of pressure, we're kind of split on, as far as the board goes. Maybe you can see me now, um, we're getting a lot of pressure from different board members to get going, and I've told them, we're kind of in a we're at everybody else's mercy, basically. And, uh, so it's kind of created a, I don't know if any of you heard, but kind of a divide between us board members. We wanted to get going as, as soon as we can, I realize we can't get going till the governor puts everything on yellow. So, uh, you know, we're just kind of in a waiting game, I've put it to a vote as to whether to scrap the season or to kind of wait and see, we're gonna have a meeting tomorrow, uh, I guess to fini- finalize that, but right now, it looks like we might just wait till about May fifteenth, and to see if we go from orange to yellow. If we don't go to yellow by that date, I think we're gonna have to scrap the season, it's getting late enough in, in the season, um, it's warming up, we're usually on the tail end finishing up this next week with Little League, so. I, you know, I I've got some board members that are ready to just hang it up, I've got some that are telling me that I'm not doing enough as a board president, that we need to, uh, be protesting down at the city office buildings to to get these kids playing, and, uh, so it's, it's been fr- pretty frustrating on my part, uh, because I know the situation. Um, but I've got a lot of fingers pointing at me to, to get going, and, you know, we don't, it's not our field, so. But whatever you guys can do to, to let us, let us play, um, when that time happens, we're, we're ready to go, but just so you know, if, if the governor doesn't lift things up by May fifteenth, I, I'm thinking we're probably gonna scrap the season.
Josh, there was, you're familiar with the attempt the commissioners and the mayors made to get the governor to go yellow, that was declined by general.
Yeah, I saw that letter.
That went back in today, the letter was revised and was resubmitted today with some different information in it. Based on some insider information we got from the general's office, so we're hopeful that'll get some traction this time.
Okay.
As soon as I know, I'll, uh, I'll spread the word, but that did get resubmitted today again.
Okay.
That's good news.
Josh, question.
Yes.
I, the way I understand it, Little League has canceled all postseason tournaments, and not going to hold any. Uh, so we, we're just talking about having a league and letting the kids play, is that right?
We're just talking about our league only, they've left it open with dates to play up in Cedar for a state, but I haven't heard back if that's gonna happen or not, because I can tell you now that Dixie has told us that they're gonna cancel their season as well as Cedar American, uh, a couple other leagues are still kind of in the wait and see mode. Uh, Cedar National has voted that they're gonna do whatever they can to play, when they can play, I guess. Uh, so there, it's open to play, but if, if half of these leagues aren't playing, I, I really don't see the, the, the state level happening, a- after that, it for sure, that, that's been canceled, anything after the state, it's already been canceled.
Alright. Well, I sure like to see the kids play, but I think in compliance with the governors, we need to wait for the yellow, uh.
Yeah. Yeah, and I, I understand that. So, um, we want to, if we can play, you know, we'll have things in place to send out that, uh, you know, parents are allowed, uh, with kids. I, probably not, that, w- we want to limit the numbers, we'll stagger games. Uh, those that want to sit out in their vehicles, we would encourage that in the outfield, obviously during the major league games, it's probably not a good idea if you want to get your car hit, but. So we want to implement some of those things, just to kind of keep things safe. I- i- that's if, if we go to yellow, if, if you guys allow us to play on your fields.
Yeah, I do have the Utah leads four point oh in the Dropbox. I can share that if anybody, if you would like me to. Can, we can see what that, the changes are when we go from the orange to yellow.
I think that'd be good, Brock.
Okay.
Okay.
Mayor, do we, do we know the, I read the letter, but i- i- is it just a one size fits all for the state going from orange to yellow is, is? What was their reason?
That was, I mean, if you read the letter that came back from the general, that was kind of inferred in there. From what, um, Mayor Pike and Commissioner Onkla shared with me today, they're on the phone right now. They started a phone call at five with some of the members of the legislature and our local reps. Um, talking about it, and the new letter that went in today from the county was based on some information that um, was received from the general's office, that, you know, like, hey, if this letter says a few things like this, maybe it's got more chance, and so they made those changes and sent it in. Um, we don't know how it's gonna be received yet. Um, we'll just have to look and see, the question that I had going from orange to yellow. The yellow does increase the gatherings up to fifty people, but doesn't allow sporting events.
I don't, I've looked at that, I don't know if that's, if it's clear.
You know, if it's if it's clear, then that's, a lot of stuff in there, leaves it up to local interpretation, then we're in a lot better position if it, if it didn't say no sporting events.
And I know, Mayor, from my, uh, I guess, the town hall call that was on Friday, this topic came up with the team sports and that. And that was the biggest question is that they felt that it was too vague. There wasn't enough guidance on that. And so they were sending back to the governor's office to try to get more guidance on team sports and really where they fit in to the, what color they would fit into. So on this, this chart, the far left, where my cursor is, if you see that, that's the, yeah, the green, the new normal. The second column is yellow and then oranges on the right. Far right would be red.
Yellow said must be seated to maintain the six-foot distance. Sorry.
Which I, and I think going to yellow, uh, you know, you, the mayor said you get to fifty. But fifty, uh, as much as I, I love Little League and I love baseball and would love to see it happen, even at fifty, you start to run, as Josh said, you'd have to stagger games, cause you end up with twelve kids per team, two coaches. You're twenty-eight kids, just right, people right there. If you had a parent for each person, you'd be, well, you'd end up over fifty. So there's definitely would have to be some, some mitigation, some things done, even in the yellow that we'd have to do or probably should do to.
Yeah. Yeah, and we would.
Yeah, and the playgrounds are still closed. So the siblings, I know in the past, that's a family out and going and watch, you know, a sibling play ball and all the kids are there and they, some go to playgrounds and hang out. That, we may have to discourage that or limit that, Josh, since playgrounds are still closed.
Yeah, and we can do that. We can, we can put out a mandate in our, when we send out our notice. If we get the okay to play, we would, you know, say that, uh, we can, we can just say a parent or guardian or both parents. I mean, just to keep those numbers down and no siblings.
Brock, I think, I think if you go to page six of that document, it talks about team sports. And it, and it notes under orange now that team sports, um, are not allowed.
Yeah.
But when we go to yellow, it, it does say that, that you just should exhibit caution when engaging. It's the second bullet point in the outdoor recreation section from the bottom. So go to the next page and it's the second bullet point up in the gray.
So it, it kind of allows for steam, team sports if you exhibit the caution in there.
Right. It says above, you still have to keep your six-foot social distancing and all those other requirements. But it, it appears it will allow it once we go to yellow.
That'll help your base stealing percentage, Josh, if the kids have to have an automatic six-foot lead. That.
Yeah, free bases.
Yeah, and the catcher's gotta be way back. That's gonna make it harder on him. Lots of pass balls, easy base steals. My kind of game.
Well, and, I mean, if we have to with an umpire, we can put him behind the pitcher's mound instead of having him right behind the catcher to call balls and strikes. It's not ideal, but we can even do that.
Yeah. And no parent can get within six foot of an umpire. That's a great rule. We ought to put that on.
Nice.
So I have a question. Um, from everything that I've been reading about this and being part of the league calls, was my understanding that like, for example, my business is a place where people con- congregate. I could go to my local health department and ask for an exception. Um, and then I don't know if the health department goes to the state and gets that permission, or if they can just grant that, but can Little League be in the same boat where Little League asks for an exception based on whatever factors we can provide? Or doesn't that have to be the whole county goes to yellow, but just we can get Little League going?
I think that was my question earlier on what the states. Again, I'm, I'm not gonna rant on this, but it, it's frustrating how we've set this up. I, I was told today that our COVID ward over at the hospitals is empty. And yet we're still at orange. And, you know, I don't know if that's.
The report I got still had three hospitalized.
What's that?
The report I got, they still had three hospitalized.
Okay, they've got, they've got three, but, but the whole point was we were doing this to not inundate our hospitals and our hospitals are, and so I'm just watching this and we drove the county, the, the Sunday all through and, and playgrounds all over the county were open. And so I, I'm just scratching my head on how we're, again, I understand where the sta- state is, but it just, it just seems like, uh, it sounds like they're gonna do something next week, but it, I, I don't see any reason why we're not why it's a, a one size fits all, which is extremely frustrating.
Now, we can, um, we can make a request to the health department. What I'm seeing from Dr. Blodgent with the other stuff is just forward that request to the state um, for an exemption. He hasn't gone too far out on a limb himself with, with any decision that way, but we could, we could check with him and see. I'm on the phone with him again in the morning. I can bring it up in the morning and see. Hopefully we'll get a response to the new letter to the governor. Um, the fear I have is if we open before our neighbors open, that everybody's gonna come here. Just like with Gunlock and, and, um, what happens out there on the weekends, because everything in the neighborhood is closed except those facilities. And then they get overwhelmed. And now you've got a different public safety hazard going on at the Gunlock. I, I've never been excited when the waterfalls stop, but I found out they stopped today and I got excited, cause now there won't be, um, you know, twenty tons of human waste on the west side of the river out there.
So, a- and I, and I see from, from a Little League side, it's, you know, I've been on, I'm, believe me, I wanna play. And, uh, but, you know, I'm visiting with, with, uh, several of the board members. And the concern is, look, we've got, we don't wanna be the rogue league that just does it to, um, be, you know, to do it. But on the same token, it's, it's just, I mean, it's, it's painful to watch how we're going about this. And, and, uh, and, you know, it's a hundred degrees out there and we're, you know, and I cry, again, it's just, the, from what we've been told all the way through to where we're at and how, things that are getting said, it's, uh, I, you know, I'd love to see, I'd love to see Utah take the lead in some way to get things opened up. And it sounds like they are, but I, I think from a Little League side, I, I get it. We can't, uh, we gotta wait till the governor says what we can do, but by then it might, might be too late, you know? And, and again, Little League for Washington counties, way different than Little League from Salt Lake County, because their leagues aren't starting until April. And they're, they're a month behind us regardless. Um, just because of weather. And, and I think that needs to be taken into account is, we're finishing in the next two weeks usually.
Josh, has there been any discussion about a fall league?
No, we've kind of, uh, I know of one other Little League up north that's gonna do that. Um, the consensus among the board members is you're into football and soccer. And so we, we wouldn't have very enough numbers. And so we've just said everybody, we've gotta move on if it, if it comes to that. That's, that's pretty much the consensus.
Cause I'm, I'm still a little concerned that you're gonna have football in the fall.
Yeah, and that, that may or may not. I don't, you know, that's, I, I would have thought we would have been playing baseball by now too. So I don't know. I mean, it, it just seems like it's been, keeps dragging on and so we, we very well might not be playing football in the fall.
Well, well, I will let you know as soon as I hear anything back from the governor about us going yellow. I mean, you may hear before we do. I, I appreciate the league being willing to take the cautious approach and implement new, you know, guidelines and rules as part of the league. And, uh, I think I'm sensing support from the city to allow you to play if we can get that yellow designation.
Yeah. Well, um, we'd love to play and we'll implement things that'll be in, like, in guidance with the, under the gu- what the governor said. And we, you know, we'd love to be out there. So we'll just kind of watch. And if, uh, if we, if you hear something or, or by May fifteenth, if we hear something, we're gonna be really pushing to go play. Um, so I guess my question is if, if we hear something about th- this area going yellow or the state going yellow, if there's something that happens between now and May fifteenth, do I need to have a meeting with the city council? Or do I just need to call Brad to get the okay?
What, what I think I'd like to do and counsel with your permission is, Josh, go ahead and put your new guidelines, your new rules together. Have them ready to go.
Okay.
And as soon as we hear we're going yellow, um, give those to Brad so that they're on file at the city. And we'd probably be okay with you. Go ahead and start in your, your game schedules. Just coordinate with Brad. But let's get those, those guidelines and those rules written up and then in the city's hands, so that they're ready to go the day it happens.
Okay. All right.
If we need to tweak them, we'll tweak them, but we'll work.
Yeah, I mean, we'll, we'll send them to you and you can, you can tell us if we need to add something or what. We're, we're open to that.
Okay. Counsel, are you okay with that?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
There you go. There you go. Let's see what we can do.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Now, you gotta call and tell my wife, cause when I tell her, I'll probably have to sleep in the back of the house. She's been really concerned about this. When I get thirty minutes of it every night. So.
Yeah. I believe it. Okay. Thank you. All right. Thanks.
Counsel.
Thanks, Bradley. Number two A three, construction standards amendment. Jack?
Yes, uh, over the last few years, I've been trying to, um, make a change in the standards. And the mayor kind of fought me at it, fought, fought me on it at first. But, uh, now I think he, he's coming around to it. But, uh, one of the problems we have in our developments on hillsides or where the property slopes and the lots, um, rise from one lot to another lot, maybe three or four feet. We have an enormous amount of complaints when people try to construct on their lot. And then they, they put a wall in and, uh, they do something that the, uh, the, uh, person above is not happy with, or they put a rock wall in and it's not in the right place. Um, and it, i- it just really creates a lot of problems between, uh, the, uh, individual owners. And then they come down to the city and they want the city to do something about it. And so one thing that we would like to put in the standards is to have a minimum of a, if the, if the lots change within three feet of each other, the, the developer, when he develops a lot, has to put in a three-foot wall. And the wall has to be on the upper side of the upper lot. And so that way, there would already be a wall in. It would be on the upper lot property line. Um, and then we wouldn't have these problems when people go in. And a lot of times we've had people and they can hardly even develop on their lot, because uh, you've got that slope from each lot as it slopes down. And it hasn't been dug out properly. Um, and so somebody will try to put a wall in and they're not on their property line. And so it's just created a lot of problems for I and Cory. And I think it would just clean up the subdivisions and make it a lot nicer for the property owners. Rick, I don't know if you wanna add anything else to that?
Um, I mean, the only, the hesitation that I've had in the past is just the additional cost it puts on the lot. Plus that, but I, we've had enough issues with it, not only in Santa Clara and other areas, that I'm okay re- mandating the walls be put in. Um, at least the walls that are three feet and, and higher. The, what we think we should do is have the property lines for the lots be at the bottom of the wall, so that the wall is owned and controlled by the property owner above the wall. So that any grids or anything that are put in as part of that wall system are owned by the, the property that the wall's holding up. And the downstream guy can't go in there and disturb it, cause he may not like the rock wall or the color and wants block or something else that the property corners would be distinctly on the bottom hill side as we step down the hills. And, um, I don't know, Jack, if you're gonna put requirements for the walls in there as far as what they can or can't be, if you're still gonna leave that up to the developer?
Well, I, I think we ought to leave that up to each individual developer. It would be very nice to see him consistent, um, in a development. For instance, the hills subdivision that's going in over there on phase three up the hill, uh, all of those walls are gonna be consistently built out of the same type of material. So we, we have some consistency. We don't have a hodgepodge of all kinds of different walls. You, you can actually see some of that in, in Hills Phase Two, where they've got the big concrete blocks. Some people have got rocks. Some people have got block walls. And, uh, some of them block four foot, uh, by two foot block, concrete blocks are, are, you know, not very pretty on the back side of them. And we've got some of that in that phase two. So it would just be nice to have, have those walls put in. I think it just makes for a lot better development and it cleans it all up. And then, um, you know, I'd prefer them to be out of concrete, because then somebody that, that wants to put a wall on top of it, they can just drill their, the holes in the concrete and, and go up with a block wall. You know, where if they put rock, uh, the person on the upper side can't get, you can't very well dig a footing in a, in a rock wall, you know?
Well, and so are you talking about retaining wall? I mean, there is a difference between a block wall and a retaining wall and, and the height of that wall. So you're gonna have to change your, all your subdivision ordinances, because if they're putting in a, a retaining wall, it's four feet high to retain their soil. And what if the people on the downside don't wanna have a ten-foot wall on their side? I, I'm, I'm looking at it as something I wouldn't, I wouldn't think the city would wanna be involved in that. I think it would be better to leave it to the property owners to make the adjustments. And yeah, I know what you're talking about with uniformity, but, uh, still, there's some, a whole lot of issues that need to be worked out between the two property owners, even after the wall is done. And to me, uh, I, I would just hate to jump into that fray. And, and if we have them put in a wall and the wall isn't, uh, substantial enough to hold the grade and it collapses, who's responsible? Is the city gonna take the responsibility for that if it was built according to our standards and stuff? I, I just think we're looking at taking on a lot of liability that, uh, to me, I, I, I understand the aesthetics of it. I think it, it would be better, so you didn't have those issues, but I, I mean, I had a wall on my old home and on the, uh, west side, that wall was ten feet high. It was just basically a, uh, anyway, it was like driving down a, an alleyway, but it was my choice because I wanted to block, fence in my yard and the neighbor's home was four and a half feet higher on that side than mine. And so to, to basically build a six-foot wall, put it up ten feet high. And, and that worked out, cause we could work it out together. I don't know. I, I just think that would be scary.
So I have to uh, agree with Jack. If we can get these block walls, these. agree with Jack. If we can get these block walls designed with the sub divider in, our hillside ordinance says we don't want ten foot walls. We want to offset those walls. These lots are cut at time of subdivision. It, it creates a better situation for issuing a permit because we get a lot of people from out of town that come and want to buy a, a building lot, but they don't understand whether the lot is ready to build on. If, if the sub divider, the developer hasn't put the retaining in there. Throughout the first phase of the hills at Santa Clara, we had slopes that extended over the property line. The homeowner would buy the property and then not understand that it was their responsibility to, for their house to fit, to put in a retaining wall. They wanted the developer, they always went back to the developer saying, hey, you sold me this lot and said it was a buildable lot, but now you want me to spend twenty thousand dollars and put in a retaining wall. So there's been a lot of litigation and, and infighting between one property owner and the other. And they always want me, the building official to make the other guy pay for it. And it's a lot better if the developer builds them a buildable lot and sells them a buildable lot. That's my two cents. So I'm all for having it done upfront. The builder builds the walls or at least establishes the property line. So he doesn't have a slope going across.
It, it also helps us with some storm drain issues where they can actually retain the, the water on their lot and it's not running down off into the other lot. But it, it really is, it has been a problem for us. So we'd sure like to see a change in the, in the construction standards. It, I feel like it'd all fall on the developer because he's the one that would be required to put the wall in.
But he builds it according to our standard and our standard isn't enough to retain some of the blue clay issues. All of a sudden it's our problem, not theirs.
No, the wall retaining walls are designed by the, the site geotechnical engineer. And so any wall, any wall four feet or taller has to be engineered under the code. And that is done specific for the subdivision and the specific subdivision soils constraints by the developer's engineer. As part of that process. And so they would, the city doesn't have a construction standard for retaining walls other than the building code, right Corey?
That's correct.
And I don't.
Relying on the design professional.
Yeah, we're, I don't see the city do, stepping into that arena because of the, just what you're saying, Danny. The variance of the soils conditions on the sites and the heights of those walls. And the way they're drained on the uphill side can have a huge impact on it. I don't want unless the city's going to pay to have the walls engineered, the city's not going to take that liability for, for performance of the walls. That'll be developer driven. And the city may issue a permit for it, but it'll be based on construction plans that are provided by the developer or his engineer or the builder's engineer. Correct? What you guys are talking about?
Yes.
Correct.
We've got a big, you know, this eighty acres that's just on the south side of the bridge that's going to go up on the hill. We're going to have a lot of this possibly going on up there. And we've got it taken care of, I think, pretty much in Hills Phase Three, but we're going to have a, quite a bit of it on this edge development and it would be nice to have this in place.
The, I think what you guys are talking about is just implementing any wall taller than three feet that they're going to put in there between their pad grades. So if their pad grades vary by more than three feet, it's got to have a wall.
That's correct.
If that wall's higher, it's got to be engineered.
Correct.
Those would be the steps you'd be adding to the standards.
Can I clarify something? Um, did you say that in our ordinance, it only requires them to be engineered over four feet?
I think that's a building code requirement. Four feet and taller has to have an engineered wall.
So what are we, i- if we write the design standards for three feet, then we're saying somebody doesn't have to have it engineered at three feet, but we will require it engineered at four feet?
Follow the, the building code, yes.
Okay.
Well, uh, uh, let's clarify that a little more because a wall and a retaining wall are two different things.
Yeah, and we're just.
Block wall that doesn't retain anything.
We're talking retaining walls with the ordinance, not privacy walls. Strictly the retaining walls. We wouldn't make the developer build the privacy walls. They could still, property owners could still come back and build those at, at their leisure. We're not mandating privacy walls. We're just going to mandate that if you've got pad elevations diff, more than three feet differential from one pad to the next, you have to build the wall.
And that's a retaining wall.
That's the retaining wall. Yep, exactly. Not the privacy. If they come in and say you've got a, a six foot wall and they want to put a privacy wall on top of it later, they would have to set that back because your maximum wall height now is nine feet. Corey, is that right?
Nine feet unless they go to the planning commission.
Yeah. So they would either have to come to planning commission for a specific wall height adjustment or set that upper wall back. Now on a rock wall or on a, any segmented block that is not a solid concrete or solid masonry wall, they'll have to set that upper wall back anyway because you can't design a footing for that privacy wall on top of a rock retaining wall. It has to set back away from it. It won't, I mean, you can't, those segmented blocks settle. They're, they've got the settlement built into it. And so you can't put a rigid foundation on top of that. Um, so they typically would set those back that may help resolve that height issue with the setback. But they've got to deal with the engineering on that themselves.
Well, and, and, and then it creates another problem with offset. That means I'm going to lose two or three feet of my side property to put an offset wall in that I would have preferred to put on the property line when it was initially put in. I, I.
But you'll see that on the first day. When you first go up to buy the lot, the wall will be there.
Well, I know that the, the retaining wall will be there, but a lot of people don't know that we're going to require them, if they want to put another wall in, that they've got to set an o, an offset wall inside of that wall instead of actually on the property line. Then they lose three, and so are we using, if we build a privacy, a, a wall, an offset wall, does that wall become an infringement in the eight foot and ten foot setbacks?
No.
I think that's why.
No, that wouldn't.
Sorry, Corey.
No, that, that setbacks are for property line. It doesn't matter where the wall's at.
But you have the right to tear that wall down if I'm building in your setback. And you have to access. You know, one of the reasons why you've got your safety so vehicles can get in and back and forth. But if I put a, a wall in, in the, in the setback, your right for access still gives you the right to tear that down at my expense.
Danny, most of.
So we have fire access. Yeah, we have setbacks on both sides of a house.
Right.
And people put all sorts of stuff in those setbacks. They, they are allowed to put a, a, a wall closer to the house in that setback. There's no, there's no restrictions on putting a, a fence anywhere from the face of the house in the setback.
Well, I, I just look at it and all of a sudden I've got a, I've got a real issue if a water line breaks or something and I, and you have to have access back to the back. And I've built my wall within five feet of my house. I've got a real problem. But now we're going to be requiring them to have an offset from their eight foot property line. And we're going to offset the wall at least two feet. So all of a sudden I've got a down piece of property. Plus I've got a wall that can be torn down at any time. I think we're, we're jumping into a, a can of worms to me, but.
Doesn't St. George already require this? Isn't this part of St. George? Washington went through this same thing. They ended up with so many lawsuits for not building retaining walls and that went over in majestic hills and, and silver. I'm with you, Jack. If, if a concrete wall on the, on the property, it, it eliminates all that problem. And, and it does, it does get problematic in quarter acre lots. And I'll, I'll tell you this is we're dealing with right one right now in Coral Canyon. We've got the wall. Our client's building a home on the lower lot. The upper lot's already built. All they did was slope into the lower lot and build a privacy wall on top of the slope.
Yeah.
And now my client's going in wanting to dig in this pool and basically wants to cut right to the property. And that's, that's where the problem begins is, and I can't believe about it, but if you went in on, on where you're dealing with minimal setbacks and said, okay, if, if, again, if it's a minimal setback on a quarter acre lot where we're going to end up with eight and 10, those walls probably need to be concrete walls on property line, you know, on, not property, but, but the face of the wall is going to be on the property line to, going to the upper lot. And then they don't have to deal with the, the problems of a rock wall because I'm looking over there at Kent Frye subdivision and, and that's probably where some of these are too. And you've got a rock wall and you've got a block wall and you've got a concrete wall. And those rock walls are eight feet away from the house. The back of the wall, six feet away from the house. And now they've got to set that back two to four feet to get another wall in there. Uh, where if they would have just ran, you know, a three foot concrete wall down that property, that, that thing's, that problem's resolved. Again, I, I know exactly why you're doing it because we deal with it. And it is, is a problem and Washington dealt with it severely a couple of years ago because they were leaving all the retaining up there and uh, it's right there on Camino Real and all those going up, up through there to the homeowners. And it was a hodgepodge of walls and you know, the, uh, the retaining wall ends up on the lower, on the lower property and that guy wants to come in and build his house, but he's got, so there, there's ways to de, deal with it, but, but on a smaller lots, the ideal wall's going to be a, going to be a concrete retaining wall on that property line. Uh, because it eliminates those problems and I, and I don't.
I don't have any problems with that as long as I can build on top of that wall. If I can add, add my concrete block wall on top of that wall. But if I have to go in and offset it and build my eight foot wall or six foot wall inside that, then I've got a problem, problem because there's two feet of unused property and the neighbor might as well own it. I, I just think that the offset wall is not a good idea at all.
Yeah, Danny, you, if they put in an eight inch concrete wall, they're going to have a footing in big enough that if you wanted to wall on top of that concrete wall, it's three feet high or even four feet high, you could put another four foot block wall on top of that. Um, that's the, that, that is the advantage of it. And then it's, 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 it's right on the property line. And you don't have a battle between the two residents.
I, I agree with that part of it. I, I just don't want to see our code be an additional wall offset. Because to put the footing, you're going to be a two foot offset. All of a sudden you've given up two feet of property to your neighbor. Or it becomes a trash pit and a, a weed garden for you. And to me, as long as we can build on top of the wall, that's, that'd be great. I just don't want to see us requiring the offset.
Well, the.
Time you have an offset is if you go ten feet.
Yeah, the, the offset's going to be based on the geotechnical report, not on the city ordinance. It'd be based on that wall. How tall that wall is and what they build that lower wall out of.
Yeah.
Going to dictate where that privacy wall is on top of it. Um, I've seen them where they go in and they do, um, they don't put a linear footing, a, a spread footing in there. They, they come in and they do post footings. And they suspend the privacy wall above the ground so that it can go through and have some movement put into it. There's a couple of ways they can do it, but all the production builders in town, um, they're pretty much mandating those retaining walls be built before they take over the lot. For this very reason. The thing that I'd probably add to our ordinance that I haven't seen in others is when we get a drawing of record at the end of a subdivision, we're going to require them to do construction plans for, that'll include all the walls, but we're going to make them as builded at the end. So that when they submit a plan before we approve a subdivision for recording, we'll see where those walls have been built. If they've, if they've built that wall in the wrong place, we're going to make them amend the lot boundary so that it moves over and we don't have malls being built where they shouldn't be built. They have to be built according to plan. If we put the developer and the contractors on notice and enforce it, I think the problem of the encroaching onto the neighbor with your wall will go away. And you'll be able to see the building area that you've got available when you walk on site to buy the lot as the home buyer. It's going to be right there in front of you. And where that sidewall, if you wanted a side privacy wall, we can make them put that into their, their geotechnical report for the subdivision as well. If they're going to go with rock walls, we can make them specify the setback and how they're going to maintain that strip in between. You can't give that, that separation to the lower lot owner because then he can come in and tear down the wall and the whole thing comes down. So it has to be owned by the upper property owner, at least in my mind. I, I would, you know, doing this, we're going to bring in some other requirements on the developer as well as just building a wall. He's going to have to document it.
I, again, the idea to me is very good. But I, I just see we're taking on a lot of liability issues that been the property owners fighting it out, not the city. Drainage issues are always by law. If the upper lot drains onto the lower lot by law, they have to take care of their drainage. And if we're going to take that issue on with ourselves and requiring laws for the developer, it's going to, that's fine. It's going to add a tremendous amount to the development costs. Impact fees won't even scare what those will be for some of these, like the, the hills over there and the new eighty acre subdivision that they're going to do with their vacation rentals and stuff like that. I've seen what ANSS have been doing with quality excavation, requiring the lots to be excavated with the walls and stuff. And I think that's great. And when a wall fails, I hope it goes back after the developer and not the city.
Just to clarify, one of the comments that you made, Danny, uh, now like the hills at Santa Clara, there's no easements along the side property lines. They're all in the front because the utilities are on their front. So when a subdivision comes through TRC and we've been approving them, we've even increased the, uh, the front setback for utilities to fourteen foot for an easement. And done away as per ordinance, if the city engineer agrees with the side easement and the rear easement. So just letting you know that those easements are no longer.
They can build zero lot lines on sides? Corey, can they build zero lot lines?
No, I'm talking. No, I'm talking about easements. The, the property line's still there, but the easement is going away. Okay?
So as far as our fire and, and public safety is concerned, we're not changing the size, side yard setbacks. We're just putting the easement in the front.
Correct. That's correct.
So Jack, Jack, I have a question. Does it make sense based on Danny's concern with offsetting walls to just require that it be a concrete wall and not give the developer an option? That way you know that you've got enough in the footings to go higher for that upper lot without losing part of your lot?
Uh, yeah, I, I like that because then the owner on the upper lot always has the ability to, to like Danny says, to take off from that lot or that top of that wall and, and go up the additional footage that they want for their wall. If, if it was land. If, if it was landscape rock or big lava rock, what happens is the guy comes, the upper lot comes up and he can't even get a foot on his property line because it's, it's lava. And he has to set it back. He might have to set it back three or four feet. And the problem with this house even fitting on the lot, that's what we're seeing.
Right.
See him be a concrete wall.
So, so if that's the case, when we know that that's already an issue and so we're trying to solve a problem, don't we just want to, and Ben, maybe you can chime in since you do this all the time, but don't we want to just say it's got to be a concrete retaining wall so that we don't have this other issue down the road where we're trying to address a separate issue?
I believe so, especially on the, on the smaller lots. When you get to a bigger lot like Ben was talking about, they've got room that they could put a lava wall and then they could put their block wall behind it, not really affect their lot that much. So I think on some of them, we need to have a little variety, but I think for the most part on a residential lot, they, it ought to be out of concrete.
And Jack, it might, it might vary. You know, you get an ANC that comes in that's going to build out the entire subdivision. You know, and they, maybe it's common landscaping or things like that. I, I think what the problems you run into is when you've got these small lots and you end up with individual owners who have different builders. Some are doing owner builders. That's where you're going to run into the problem. It is just, that's where it would be nice. And I use Kent Frye subdivision over there. And there's others. The hills is, the hills is the same way. Those first phases, I agree. You know, they're on the smaller lots, if, if it is going to be open for sale and people can hire their own builder and everything else, it is frankly, I think this keeps us out of litigation. I think this protects us because we're issuing building permits and you've got two owners that are arguing over this established property line and retention and drainage and everything else. This is going to eliminate the majority of that. It is going to add cost to the developer coming from the development side. But I, I've watched it. I don't know what St. George exactly has done. Jack, Corey, you guys have probably looked into it, but they've the cities have been, the other cities have been dealing with this exact same problem for a long time. And, and the last I was told is Washington is jumping on to where they're going to require retaining walls built by the developer. So they're uniformed, they're consistent, and they're done by the same engineer in the development. So I, I think there's some things around it. Again, on the smaller lots where they can be individually sold, I would like to see those as concrete. And frankly, your standard probably just needs to state that the footing needs to be designed to support a wall of, of nine feet in height at some point. So, you know, if it's only a three foot retaining, but they want to add you know, a six foot block wall, it's already been designed for that. But, you know, and Mayor may have more to that. I just think the cities have been dealing with it. I, I think it will, it'll get us out in front of, of potential problems. Certainly, we don't want to you know, drive costs, but the costs are there regardless. The costs are going to, the developer is going to, going to pass it on to the end user or the end user is going to have to pay for it himself by doing it. So I think it just protects, I think it'll get a better product. And probably, probably eliminate more of the litigation that potentially could come to the city. Because again, they're going to fight and argue and eventually they're drawn in the city. Corey and you guys are dealing with it now. So that's just what I think.
Okay. Well, I, I think we've got a good, had a good discussion. And I just wanted to see if you guys felt like it was okay, we could move forward with putting an ordinance together and then bring it back to another work meeting and we can discuss it more. And I don't know, Rick, if you've got anything else to say, but that, that's what I wanted.
Now, the, the concrete walls is your most expensive option out there. That's why you don't see a lot of them. Because they are the most expensive option. So you may want to look at, you know, base it on height or something. A reinforced masonry wall is cheaper than, than a concrete wall. And a rock wall is cheaper than a masonry wall. So you're, you're going to the Cadillac and then we'll have issues with what color it is. The Jim's RV issues are going to come in. So take a shot at it, Jack, and let's see where you land.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Number three, staff reports. Chief Hancy.
Yes. So we're in the process right now of interviewing for our seasonal firefighters. We did interviews today or looking at starting them next Monday. Depending, getting all the paperwork in place. They're also going to continue with some burn projects that Monday. So we look forward to getting those guys going. And as chiefs in the county, we've had some discussion amongst us with the potential for heightened burn potential this season. So we're looking at closing the burn season a little bit sooner than the end of the month. That would be the 18th. And so we'll put something on the website that goes along with getting your burn permit. There will be an updated notification there for that. So that's what we've got going. Everybody's staying healthy and we haven't transported any COVID patients as of yet. So we've been fortunate that way and, and taking all the proper precautions and everybody's doing well.
Yeah, I noticed a lot of gin grass and cheat grass came to life after that last wet season. So there's a lot of fuel out there.
There is. It was green and now it's turning purple and brown. So it's ripe and ready to light off. So in fact, we responded on one close call this last week on a fire illegal burn in a gentleman's backyard that lit the fence on fire between him and his neighbor. And there was a shed that was pretty close that almost caught fire. And he had a wood deck attached to his home that the weeds burnt right up to his wood deck. And it was a close call. So neighbors with their hoses and fire extinguisher from the police officer helped knock that thing down before it got away real quick.
Good work. Questions for the chief counsel? Thanks, Chief. Jack?
Okay. If you guys get a chance, drive down Arrowhead. We've got the curb in on Arrowhead. And down by the school, it looks really, really good. When you drive down there and see it, it's cleaned it up so much. I'm really excited about that. And the guys have, will finish the sidewalk tomorrow, actually. Take a look at the sidewalk too. They've done a beautiful job on the finish. And I got to say, they are really good. They're doing a great job. So I'm really tickled with what they've done. And then we're going to be a little while after, because we're going to move from there. We're moving down to the bridge and we're going to be asphalting the, the road on Chapel Street and then going over to the sycamores. We'll do that Tuesday and Wednesday. So we're going to be pretty busy. And then they'll fall back on the driveways there on, on Arrowhead. Washington City will be coming over with, they've got a little bigger, newer paper than we've got. And so they're actually going to bring theirs over and they've got a couple rollers and they're bringing, I think, two or three of their dump trucks. We're going to borrow Ivan's dump truck and run ours and be hauling asphalt as fast as we can. So it'll be a pretty exciting job. We just got the maintenance completed on the Vale Power Plant. Everything went really good. It used to take the guys a week to get that done. And because they've learned and becoming more efficient, they were able to do it in about two and a half days. So that was good. The water line in the trail, I believe they've got that completed today up to, up to where it needs to run. So I think they'll, they'll pretty soon get started on the trail part of it. I, I know Brad's really anxious to get that trail in and see something going, going on that. Our meters on our water and power meters, because of the COVID virus, we, we are on hold for meters. They haven't delivered all of them yet. So we're still waiting for a thousand water meters. And we're still waiting for quite a few power meters to be able to get that completed. And then at the end of this month, I've got a, a bid coming to council on the 13th. We've got a Hunt Electric. If you guys approve, it'll be coming down to help us string wire from the generation, you know, the shops all the way up to the water tank. So got a lot, lot going on and things are happening. And they're all healthy. So that's good.
Jack, when are they going to pave Arrowhead?
Well, I'd imagine they're going to, I think what he's going to want to do is get that sidewalk done and then we'll pour that, do the asphalt over there. Then they'll come back and they, they're going to, I think they want to pull those driveways out and redo the driveways that we've got to fix before they put the asphalt in. Because if they drive on it with the dump trucks and turn and those big heavy trucks, it'll tear it up.
Has, and we've talked to the, the residents there know that it's going to be a while before we get the driveways and, and the pavement done?
Yes. And they, they've been really good. They've been really good and understand. And they're just happy to have it done. And it's going to be a great example of what we've done there when we start talking to the people on Vineyard.
Yeah, it's a noticeable difference having that, where that narrow pavement was having that opened up is it's getting me excited about seeing it done up on Rachel too, as part of the, the trail project. See that narrow rip done.
Yep, you're right.
Questions for, for Jack counsel?
Do, do we know when the light poles are coming for the bridge?
Yeah, we actually have the light poles down at the yard. The guys are, we were going to try to have them up tomorrow before our, tomorrow morning for our Thursday meeting. But we've got to do some wiring and put the lights inside of them. But all four of them are actually down to the yard. If you want to drive down and look at them. They're sitting there at the yard.
The reason I ask is Mayor Byrd's son, Darren Byrd, is buying lot nine. And that's always asked me is what do those light poles look like? What I said, well, so I just wanted to give a report.
Jack's got some pictures. He can email you to show you the, the Sycamore Crossing, how the lathering turned out on them. And they look pretty good.
Send me that over, Jack. That'd be awesome.
Okay.
Any other questions for Jack? Let's see, Corey?
So I got a call from the investors with Dollar Tree. Sounds like they're ready to submit their plan review next week, which is a good, good thing. Sounds like that'll get started pretty quick. Construction drawings were dropped off this week for the Hills Santa Clara Phase Three. Jack's reviewing them. I visit with Alan with Rosenberg and he's working on construction drawings for Heritage Point. Right now, Brock said we are at 61. You've got a bill report in your Dropbox. We're up to 64 homes. And I talked to Robert Smith Superintendent at Arcadia who runs Bellasol and Arcadia. Sounds like they're going to be bringing in several townhomes and a couple more regular homes. That's why when Brock says it looks like we're going to be getting to that 80 before July with all these things on the, on the horizon and hopefully going to a yellow status soon. That's where we're at in building wise. At the city office, we're doing temporary partitions down in administration. Up in the parks and building department, we're putting glass partitions. And anticipating opening soon. And also down in administration, we're, we're going to put a permanent glass partition across the countertops and an additional doorway. So we're getting bids for that to make the administrative staff feel safer and be prepared for if coronavirus ever or some other thing like that pops its setup in the future. So those will have a slot on the bottom so they can pass information back and forth. They'll have, it'll be glass about five foot up and it'll have the same, the same texture or the same building material as the city office. So we met with Brock and the mayor and sounds like we can make it look good. The building maintenance. Oh, the planning commission, we have a zone change going to planning commission here in May. It's Greg Ants' property just west of Jim's RV. They want a zone change to commercial. The site has noticed that we're having a, a public hearing. The public hearing will be on Zoom. We've put the notice out at the post office and in the on the website that it'll be a Zoom meeting, how to how to log in, just like this meeting and, and participate. We also are doing an update on the ordinance 1704 PD ordinance to address the 30% open space in the commercial zone. Sort of the same one we went through with Dollar Tree. We want to clear that up. And that'll bring, both of those items will probably be brought to council on the 27th. So that's what we've been working on. And if you have any questions for me.
Questions counsel for Corey? Thank you, Corey.
You're welcome.
Hello. Let me start out with the projects we've got going. Jack talked a little bit about the lava flow trail. The pipeline is almost completed. They should be done this week and they hope to do a pressure test on it Monday. If the pressure test passes, passes, then they'll start putting in the trail next week. And once the pressure test passed, we'll go ahead and build St. George for their portion of the bridge or the water line. I think it's $98,000 plus whatever the engineering is. So we'll get that money back. We also ordered some directional signs for lava flow trail using impact fees to sort of match what St. George has on their trails. So we'll have directional trails that take you all the way from Canyon View Park all the way to Ivan's Corner. There's about five different signs that'll go along there. So that'll add a nice touch to it since it's finally going to be complete. Swiss Pioneer Memorial Park, the landscape's being installed. The playground's on order, but the factory was closed due to COVID. So I don't have a firm delivery date. The playground salesman told me he should have that for me tomorrow. They're open, but I just don't know when it's coming in. We've ordered the tables and amenities. And I was hoping maybe we could do a ribbon cutting, maybe the week of Pioneer, Pioneer Week in July. The playground, everything should be 100% complete and delivered and installed by then. The park will be done before that, but I just don't want to do anything before the, the playground's completely installed. So we're probably about six weeks out for, for that, which would put us about the second week of June. Also, on the lava flow trail, if we wanted to do some kind of ribbon cutting or something for that, let me know. It'll be done hopefully around mid-June or so. BMX Track, the next project. I visit with Brooke this week. And they want to bring out the, the guy to do the trail tech. They've already bought the material for the trail tech. I think it's in Brooke's garage. for the trail tech. I think it's in Brooke's garage. Our budget so far, the city had a hundred or had thirty thousand dollars in our budget, in the park's budget this year to help with some of the BMX track. And we're right now at out of city budget thirty-one thousand four hundred fifty-three. So we're over that budget. So I, I don't know. I talked with Brock and Brock and I discussed this since we're on a budget freeze. You know, I told her at this time, we don't have any funds to pay for that, but I don't know if that's something that you want to go ahead and do. I have her figures for what she needs to finish the track and there may be more, but I, she's having interior fencing done. That's supposed to be donated, but I have a number in there of seventy-five hundred in case they, they, they're trying to negotiate between the owners to see if they'll donate that or not. I have seventy-five hundred in there. Five thousand for the trail tack. And then they want to buy rental bikes for eighteen hundred. So the total I have and maybe Jared, maybe you have a different number, but I have fourteen-three to at least get it to where it's race ready. So I don't know if you have any questions or comments on that.
Brad?
Yes, sir.
Did you have thirty thousand budgeted and you've spent thirty-one?
Yeah, thirty-one five.
You don't need anything from the council for that additional fifteen hundred, do you?
Well, it's, it's fourteen thousand three hundred.
That's the work that's not complete, but the, the they've completed. We're going to pay for it, right?
I'll be over budget in the seven thirty account, but overall we'll have to do a budget amendment for that track altogether for the hundred fifty-eight thousand. Where actually, if you take the total number that we're, that we've expended out of the parks budget, it's a hundred and eighty-nine thousand five hundred. So we'll have to do a budget amendment for, for that.
We, Mayor, I maybe to try to answer that a little bit. So we spent over the thirty thousand that was budgeted to make that one, which took us a little bit over. But as Brad said, I did direct him that going forward any further, we would have to get direction either from council or my direction was more that they needed the additional funding was to go back to the county and ask the county for what additional funding they needed to finish their project. Not knowing at the time where that number's going to kick out at, so.
How many applications did we get for new rap tax?
Two. Maybe we just have two rap tax applications.
Was Brad's one of them for BMX?
No, I, that's for the arts. So I didn't apply for that. The, the parks gets their eighty percent of the rap tax revenue for new construction of projects.
Who, which ones came in on rap?
Ham Productions and Suzie Nelson.
For how much total?
Oh. I don't know off the top of my head. I want to say around fifteen, because I want to say Ham's asking for ten thousand again. And Suzie's was around her normal, you know, four or five thousand for all for her.
Or you might get some extra arts money get transferred over to recreation because of, we only had two apps.
That would be good.
Right? Mike, I'm not missing anything there, am I?
No, but there's extra, extra excess funds in the arts there. The council does have, there's a discretion to move that to have the parks use what they need.
That's what I'm wondering is if we're going to have extra rap money. That you can maybe spend for some of that to finish that off. Just throwing that out there. Hey, keep going, Bradley.
I hope we go to yellow pretty soon because it's really hard for families that, that have a loss and we have the burials at cemetery. We were limiting groups at the Graveside Service to ten. So now we're up to twenty. Hopefully when we go to yellow, maybe it won't be quite so hard on the families. We, we're not out there watching and enforcing it, but you know, we tell the mortuaries that they can only have twenty people at a time and, you know, to keep their distance and stuff. So we're looking forward for the families for that to go yellow. On the parks budget, Brock covered that earlier. I was just going to kind of give you an idea what kind of other money we have coming out. We have ninety-eight thousand dollars plus engineering for the pipeline from St. George. That's general fund. We have a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars coming from the, from the lights from the county. That project was about one seventy-five. So the sixty, the city spent about sixty. But we got a hundred and fifteen. We, we got a hundred and fifty-eight from Jared, who went to the county for the BMX track. And we still have fifty thousand dollars coming from the RP, RTP for the the bridge on lava flow. So total for this year for all of those is four hundred twenty-one thousand dollars. So that's a lot of money to help us do projects from outside sources. So that's all I really have, I think, unless you have any questions for me.
Plus you have the fifty K coming from flood control for Graff family.
Okay.
We've only spent, what was that bill I sent you, Brock? Thirteen?
On the ace?
Yeah.
I haven't looked at it yet either. I'm sorry.
I don't know when they're going to be able to come back, but we, we've still got more to do down there on that one, when we ever get them back in town.
Hopefully soon.
Any questions for Brad, council?
Everybody wants to go home.
Only seven o'clock. We got another two hours. Roll on, Brock.
All right. So a little bit to talk about is opening the, the city office. I want to have a little discussion is when to open that. As Corey stated, we're working on getting some, the protection things set up that we, they're still not in place yet. So right now, tentatively, I'd like to, if we, with councils, okay, to look at March or May eighteenth. So roughly a week and a half. Hopefully next week we'll have the, the barriers upstairs if where Selena and Sherrell are in the building and parks will be next week. And then we can start the, we already have some stuff here in the front office. As Corey stated, we're still working on more permanent fixture. We're getting signs are being made to remind people of social distancing, some of the marks in the floor. We're also putting some sign looking at the front office, right? The door coming in. Kind of a attention grabber. Make people think if, you know, kind of read through if they've had any sickness or anything recently not to come in. To try to do things by appointment or over the phone. So if May eighteenth is a, all right, as a, a date for us to shoot for, would, I think would be good for staff.
It, we're just talking the lobby then, right?
Yeah, opening up in the front, yeah.
Just, just the lobby because the, the gathering room, the dining room and stuff, we're not going to open that up. We're not going to open it up for weddings or anything else until the guidelines allow it.
Correct.
You're going to put your barriers up, but at all your counters. And so it basically would just open the, the lobby up. What about the museum? Has there been any requests to reopen the museum? Any pressure that way?
No, there hasn't, man. I know they've been doing some work. They've had a, Mr. Willard down there has been down doing some work, but I have not heard or had any requests from Sherry Anderson or any of the other historical on the committee. So.
Let's wait and see what the guidance says before we decide anything on the museum for sure, council. I mean, nobody else has talked about opening their buildings. So and it, this wouldn't apply to meetings, or would it?
No, I think we still continue our meetings electronic through, at least through May. I have had discussion with Hurricane City, Washington City and St. George City the last past few days on what they're doing. They're all looking at kind of soft openings, solely rolling things. All their city offices open. Hurricanes said they're closed. They didn't give me a date. Washington City and St. George both are looking in the next week or two to slightly open some things up, bring more people back to the office. They're still trying to encourage people to do, if they want to come in by appointment, are still encouraging them to do their online billing permits and that to all just, all by drop off and pickup, not coming in. So, but they're going to start allowing people to come in to do that pickup rather than outside. So they're slowly working that way. I think they're all still going electronic meetings, at least through May. From what I understand. So they're all working that way, the opening. I know staff, maybe I might be pushing a little bit faster than what they are comfortable. We still have some that are very, they're nervous concerns. As you know, we have, we have one staff member who has lost two extended family members to the virus. So there is some, definitely some hesitation and concern that is here. So May eighteenth, like I say, may be pushing for, for some. But I know that there's a lot of people wanting to be able to get back to kind of a little bit normal procedure. So May eighteenth is kind of the date I've pushed, but I would not have any hesitation of pushing through May and till we can get the front office. I know the front office update on safety there is going to take a little bit longer to get that fully in place. So.
Council, I'd probably recommend we make sure we got that, all the work done at town hall that you're doing before we open. You can bring your employees back. You know, with guidelines, but I, I think we need to get those counters protected before you reopen the building.
Okay. And I do know court, court is completely, they're done. They're not doing anything until June second, the earliest that they're opening up is, is for the court to have any meetings or court sessions. So so maybe we'll, we'll plan on working till the, through May and keep working on trying to get our stuff fully constructed.
I mean, I'm okay with that, council. Feedback?
Brock, you'll have sta, you'll have sanitizers on all the counters and, and areas and they'll be wiped down, correct?
Yeah, we, we currently have in the office around the podium, I guess, stands out in front of the office upstairs and downstairs for hand sanitizer. And we are now, and we will continue to do, when we open up, we'll do a more current, more often, we'll do wipe downs of the countertop, probably after every person that comes in. I've talked to some of the staff and saying also, we will have them wear masks when they're dealing with the public as they come in, will wear masks. We'll probably have on the front door a recommendation that they wear masks. We won't mandate, but we will just have that recommendation. But we'll do a clean after every, every customer resin comes in, we'll do a, a clean of, of the countertop and anything that was around that person. So.
Any other questions or comments, council?
They will plan on through, through May then, we'll continue that and up to, I just want to go along with what Corey stated on his public hearing. He has a public hearing next week on that Greg Ants. We also have a public hearing. This is the update for council and for those who are, are, are watching the, the meeting tonight. Next week we have public hearing. Two of them, they're on impact fees, our public safety impact fee update and streets. And want everyone to know that for the public hearing, they won't have access online. But we do have on our website that they can go on and comment, make a public, a comment of any question or statement they have in regards to the impact fee. If they submit, when they do that, they can, it will automatically be sent to Chris. And at the public hearing, Chris will, will read in those comments that are received from the public. So that public hearing was set last, our last council meeting. So that is already open and ready for people to start making those comments. So they can make those comments. So at the public hearing, there will be no public in at the city office or on the Zoom call, there will not be them available to log in and make a comment at time. That'll all be done through this public comment. Submission to Chris. Also there will be on there going forward where they, we have our, you know, public comment at the first of our regular meetings. They can also do a public comment there going forward, as long as we're doing the electronic meetings. So just an update on that, to how people can participate still in the public hearing, since they won't be able to attend the meeting here in person. One update on the boundary adjustment that we had with St. George. Chris stayed, that was recorded on the fifth. So on Monday that was recorded with St. George there along the San Halla Wash. Camus Lane, that recording also was done. So Camus Lane down there off of Vineyard. Okay, all right. So Chris, the boundary adjustment hasn't recorded, but St. George has it. That one hasn't recorded yet. But Camus Lane has, so that's done there. And then the other thing that I wanted to talk to council about is the street signs down along Santa Clara Drive. If you notice, they're a, they're a brown, brown and white color, not the standard green and silver. And they have an old city logo on them from a long time ago. Some of the whites on that sign where the city logo is, they faded, they're kind of gone to a, a dirty brown. They look like mud's been put on them. They're just, they're faded. And I've talked with Fred Fage, who's over our street signs. And we've talked about updating those signs going to just the standard green. And but still on the one end, leaving it white and putting on our new city logo, which I think would look much better through the downtown with our new streets, our new tree logo and updating those. But we'll see what the price comes back to update those. And whether we can handle that in this current year's budget or we'll put it off till next year until we see how the, you know, revenue projections come in. But just wanted to see if council felt about that because I know those signs, like you say, old city logo and they're, they're fading and kind of some of them are, and don't look real well. Council, have any feelings or one way or another about updating those?
I'm okay with it, Brock. If you got the, when you have the money.
Okay.
Council?
I feel good about it, updating it when we have the money.
Okay.
I did the same.
All right. Other than that, there don't have anything else from, for me.
Council, anything you want to add before we close?
I have one question, well, maybe a statement or a question. I was informed that Snow Canyon High is doing a virtual graduation that's going to stream live on the twenty-first of May. Is that something that we could get the information to Crystal and have put on the city website or somewhere so that if there's members of the community who would like to support that and, and participate in that, it's, it's out there and available. So they have the information.
Yeah, I'll ask, I'll get that from Superintendent Burrisson tomorrow. He's on, he's on my twice a week call. So.
Perfect.
I'll try and get a link or whatever it is they're going to put out on.
Yeah, it's just a YouTube. It's the community education channel on YouTube. And I know ours is at seven, ours is at seven o'clock on the twenty-first.
Do you have an announcement on it, Lena?
Um, I've got a, a screenshot from Principal Brooks on it. I can forward to you if you'd like.
Send, yeah, just send that and we'll, we'll give that to Crystal and she can put something together and get it posted quick.
Okay, perfect.
Anything else, council? Okay, don't need no motions. Words earned. Thank you, everybody. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Brock, stay on for a minute.